Good evening. I'd like to start the special town meeting and call it to order. Our first item up for the agenda would be to, if everybody could please rise, and do the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next item I'd like to do is for all of us to, you all should have received a clicker. And with your clicker tonight, I'm hoping that we can try a clicker practice tonight, because we have more of us than are typically here for our annual town meeting, which I'd like to invite you all for when you see an annual town meeting. So I'm gonna ask you a question, and it's a yes or no question, so you'll see the red button is yes, and the, I'm sorry, the green button is yes, the red button is no. You can tell, you know, it has not been that late, but maybe I think it has after the workday. Okay, so green is yes, and red is no. The question is, is the sky blue? Now wait, wait till I call the vote. The question is, is the sky blue? I'm gonna call the vote. Vote is open. Now you may vote. Believe me, I'll be able to tell if you vote, because I know how many of you there are here. Okay, the vote is now closed. Some of you voted no for the sky being blue. However, the vote passes. Congratulations. Okay, so the next item up for business is some rules of the road before we get started. And this is just for a productive meeting and so that we can all get home to our families tonight. So I have a few things. So when we start to have comments or questions on the motion, I ask that those comments are relevant to the motion. I ask that we keep our comments brief. We're not gonna have redundancies, because if someone's already made a comment that you would like to say, we've already heard the comment once. I'm asking that we don't make disparaging comments either to anyone who's either made a motion, anyone that's connected to the motion, anyone that might not be connected to the motion, anyone that's related to the dog of the person that made the motion, or anything to that effect. And I ask that we please maintain decorum. This is important. This process is important, and I ask that we respect the process. With that said, by the way, I'm Jennifer Scalise-Mullett, your town moderator, and we're gonna get started. Okay, Article One. Article One is related, if you open your warrant book, it's related to the acquisition of 67 Holden Road for Fire Pond. The motion on the floor is that we move that the town accept the parcel known as 67 Holden Road as described in this warrant. The motion is on the floor. Are there any comments related to this motion? If you could please come up to the microphone. There was a question related to this. Is there any, do, there needs to be a fence put around the property. Does anyone, can anyone speak to that? I believe... Does there need to be a fence?
There is not one, and I don't plan on, we don't plan on having one at this point.
Okay, there is not one, we do not need, plan to have one. If that helps. Can I have a second to that motion? Maureen seconded the motion. Is there any other comments? Okay. Let's take a vote. The vote is open for Article One. Simple majority will beat the motion. Okay, the vote is now closed. Motion passes. Article Two is the acquisition of 6 Michael Lane for drainage. There's a motion on the floor to move that the town accept the parcel known as 6 Michael Lane as described in the warrant. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Are there any comments or questions?
Could we have the actual number of votes?
You want the?
Yes, no.
Yes and no.
Do you have the yes for the? Do you have the yes for the previous motion?
Just tell them, somebody else, somebody else.
Yes, I don't, I don't have the number for the previous one.
Do you want to remember?
207, yes, 7, no.
Article One?
That was Article One, yep. Back to the next one, please. Article Two. Any comments or questions on that motion? There being none, we're gonna open the vote for Article Two. You have 30 seconds. Can I technically close it, or do I need to say close it? Votes closed. 249, yes, 9, no. Vote passes. Article Three is voter registration. Motion on the floor is to move the town accept MGL Chapter 41, Section 110A as set forth in the warrant. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any comments or questions? Okay, vote is open. You have 30 seconds. Vote is closed. 235, yes, 29, no. Vote passes. Article Four is opioid funds. Move that the town establish a special stabilization fund for opioid funds pursuant to applicable statutes and regulation. Appropriate funds to, received to the new fund and spend sums from the sum in accordance with applicable statutes. This one's gonna require a two-thirds vote to pass. Does anyone have comments or questions on this opioid fund article? If you do, please come up to the microphone. And just state your name and your street address, please.
Larry Pave, 20 Elliott Road. Does Mass. General Law 40 require that this fund be set up in order for us to get the funds? That's the first question. The second question is, it says we'd match those funds from available funds. So that would mean we'd have to have a town vote to move those funds into this fund if we do set it up?
Yeah, so the purpose for that is to get the funds in a stabilization account specifically for that, so it is allowable use. They have very specific uses for the funds. And somewhat vague, but as the funds that we've already received will have to appropriate a town meeting in the spring in its tune of 8,700. So it's not actually double funds, it's just the funds we've already received and future
Any other questions or comments? Did I have a motion and a second?
Make the motion. And then we need a second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, the vote is open. Vote passes, 199 to 51. Article Five, capital stabilization, public safety communications. Motion on the floor to move that the town transfer from capital stabilization a sum of $30,000 for the purposes of installing emergency communication equipment. This one also requires two-thirds of a vote. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Any comments or questions on this motion?
Where will the town be located?
Need to come to a microphone and identify yourself, please.
Tell us we're questioned down here.
Did I have one down?
It's on Kendall Hill Road. I guess you just answered my question. Thank you.
I think the question was where will the tower be located, and Kendall Hill Road is the answer.
My name is George Handy. I'm the chair of the Finance Committee. And in regards to Article Five, the Finance Committee and the Capital Committee recommend
Any other comments or questions? There being none, votes open. Votes closed. Vote passes, 244 to 19. Article Six, stabilization funds, special town and, special election and town meeting. Move that the town transfer from town general stabilization account, the sum of $15,000 for the purposes of funding the special elections and special town meeting. Two-thirds of vote required. Any comments or questions?
So moved.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. Second? Comments or questions?
George, George Handy, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six.
Anyone else? There being none, vote is open. Votes closed. 224 to 44, vote passes. Article Seven is an amendment to the regional school agreement. It's a motion on the floor to move that the town amend the Watchuset Regional School District Agreement as set forth in this warrant. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any comments or questions on the motion?
Hi, I'm Linda Woodland. I'm from the school committee. I'm at 4 Dever Lane. So basically, a little background, last year, we agreed to amend the regional agreement, which we have to do every five years, and we changed to weighted voting. What we realized was that the weights maybe should be distributed a little bit differently by adding an additional member to hold in, which is technically, they were supposed to reduce by two seats this coming May, but instead it would reduce by one. This change has already been reviewed by DESI, and basically, this would be to modify the coming May 2024 election ahead of time. The current members of the school committee are 19. The final, at the end of the adjustment, is supposed to be 16. This would make it 17 instead. We want each member's vote to be as close to the value of one as possible. Holden's total weight right now is at 7.01, based on their population. So instead of having six members, we'd like them to have seven members and adjust the weight accordingly for each member. We are asking for this change to be considered at a special town meeting this fall, so that it would be in place before the May 2024 town elections. It also requires four out of the five towns to vote to approve this at town meeting. Currently, we are one of the three out of the five that are holding a vote this fall that I know of.
Thank you.
Dave Cosgrove, 14 Sunset Drive. She's just answered my question. I didn't understand the relationships of the, the four components, going from 16 to 17, and then the next portion saying reducing. I didn't understand. I thought 16 to 17 was an increase, but she answered my question. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
George Handy, Chair of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of this article, as this would further dilute the voting power of the non-Holden members, which would mean essentially Holden plus one other town would make constitute a majority of the school committee, thereby allowing two towns to carry any motions in school committee over the five towns in total. Currently, it, it's currently established right now that Holden plus either Rutland and Sterling can control the school committee voting. So that would be Holden plus either Sterling and Rutland. However, Holden plus Princeton or Paxton would not constitute a majority. Therefore, they would need three towns to control the five-town region, as it's currently constituted. I don't like that arrangement either, but we're stuck with that one right now. So making it worse, I don't think is an improvement. And that was the consensus on the Finance Committee.
Linda Woodland, from the school committee, I don't dispute your math there at all. I would just add that in school committee meetings, over the past five years, that I've witnessed them and been part of it, it's rare to have a town vote in block at the table. However, I do not dispute your math there whatsoever.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, the vote is now open. The vote is now closed. The vote does not pass. 46, yes, 223, no. Next article is our first citizens petition of the night. It's related to the Board of Health. It is a move that the town vote to urge the Board of Health to rescind their 12, 8, 22 revisions to Sterling's Subsurface Disposal System regulations as described in the aforementioned article. We're gonna have two presentations on this article. They are not to exceed 10 minutes each. I'll be timing them both. We're gonna start first by the citizens' petitioner.
Move the motion, yes.
Do I have a motion on the floor?
Motion.
Do I have a second? Okay, let's start the first of the two presentations.
I live at 24 Muddy Pond Road. In no less than three separate Mass. DEP statutory document sources, a deep hole soil evaluation is the last resort and is not required, as it goes against the Mass. DEP's overriding theme that Title V should be accomplished with minimal disruption to the involved residence property, i.e., utilizing the least invasive method possible. The Mass. DEP sanctioned references are, A, per Mass. Massachusetts Code of Regulations 310 CMR 15 dot 302 4, and I quote, "A deep hole observation test is not required to determine high groundwater elevation during an inspection," end quote. B, per the Mass. DEP Authorized Training Manual for Title V inspectors, the inspector should, and I quote, "Determine high groundwater elevation at the site through non-intrusive means unless the system's owner grants permission to initiate more extensive investigations," end quote. C, per the Mass. DEP's website, www.mass.gov/guides/guidance for the inspection of onsite sewage disposal systems, groundwater determination wherein it states stated, quote, "The deep observation hole should be only, should be used only in rare cases where there is disagreement among the inspector, the homeowner, the Board of Health, and then only after consultation with the homeowner and the Board of Health," end quote. Numerous other far less invasive methods are provided in the above references to determine the seasonal high groundwater level. Two, the vast majority of the other 350 Massachusetts cities and towns do not require the deep hole test as a matter of course. Three, there is no evidence that pre-1996 systems in Sterling have been polluting the environment. Four, the change is, is not reasonable, as it will place undue financial hardship on the citizens and was heretofore only required for new construction. Not only will the Title V be more expensive and time-consuming, i.e. for onsite excavator operator, certified soil evaluator, Title V inspector, inspector, and associated Board of Health fees, but it likely, but it's likely that many properties will fail because of the subjective nature of the test, thus requiring a completely new system. Several realtors have already declined Sterling listings for bureaucratic hardship now imposed. It violates grandfathering principles of established jurisprudence and will discourage residents from making repairs. The decision sets a troubling precedent and will open the door for more Mass. DEP contrary requirements, such as avoiding the current Title V test familiar exemption.
Basically, this is just...
Basically, this is just what's at the top of the Article 8 page, and I think it was already read to us. Oh, my name's Don Brown from 24 Muddy Pond Road. Again, this is from that first page of Article 8, which I just read, and I'm sure you all have a copy. And these are the two items. Roman numeral 5D, as in Delta, we'd like to have that deleted, and also Roman numeral 8A, line 9, we'd like to have deleted. This is a picture of a -- it doesn't look like a 10-foot deep hole, but you can see that they've got some sort of a screen up there for -- possibly for lighting because this is a visual test, so light would have some effect on the outcome of that test, possibly. Here is a picture of a 10-foot deep hole with an adjacent 5-foot deep hole alongside it. And at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Gary Menon, who is a licensed, certified Title V inspector and also a soil evaluator.
Duncan, if you wouldn't mind staying here, I'm going to go with the question.
Sure.
This new regulation was put in place on December 8, 2022, and effectively for the year 2023. And since January 2023 to the present, or actually to June, I had requested all the soil evaluation reports that were done on transfers during that time period. And I looked it over, and none of them were completed with a complete Form 11. Now, Form 11 is a five-page form, very detailed about the hydrogeology, the geology, the Massachusetts GIS information, everything about the surface structures and the substructures, if you will, the soil. And that is required by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I confirmed this with Mr. Bruce Bauke of the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. I sent them these particular soil evaluations, and he said, "They need to completely fill them out. These are invalid, okay? You need to do the complete Form 11." Right now, you see one soil report here that's clearly not a five-page Form 11 report. That's a single sheet, if you will, out of a field of a pocket guide or a pocket notebook that the particular soil evaluator sketched out some notes. That is not acceptable. Next slide, please. So, of course, there's been a lot of publications, if you will, both in the Meeting House News and in the -- in your Electric Light Department bill, where there's been some purported misinformation about this so-called deep hole. You know, but presently, as far as the subject regulation is concerned, the one we're talking about now, it still says a deep observation hole. That is a codified statutory term in Title V, and it requires a 10-foot deep hole and other parameters as well. Now, so what if it's not a deep hole? What if it's just a shallow hole, as they're now presenting it might be? It needs to only go to the bottom of the leach field, if you will. Well, I've seen -- I've personally seen deep boxes down as deep as five feet, and beyond the deep box, if you will, it can go another two, two feet at least. So you're down at least seven feet, and you want to get a little bit below that so that you can evaluate the soil below that. So you're talking at least a seven-foot hole in some cases. That's a deep, that's a deep hole in my mind in terms of it's going to happen in your front yard or your backyard. And as far as, okay, we're spreading misinformation about the cost. Well, I just, I just spoke the other day to a person who had to go through this episode, and they did the so-called shallow hole. And apart from the fact that they had to replace their system, the cost was kept separate, which was on the order of $50,000. The deep hole alone, the Title V alone, cost them $2,000. So that's data that I just received. Next slide, please. Now, the other thing was going around, if you will, perhaps it was the rumor mill, but we had one person on our side of the fence ask the question outright. People are saying, "Well, other towns require it." So we actually asked the question, "What are these other towns that require it?" And we were given the names of Acton, Westminster, Hingham, Duxbury, Orleans, Manchester, and Dover. So I went and I looked at every single one of those towns' websites and their regulations. Acton is not required. Westminster is not required. Duxbury, not required. And Manchester, not required. Orleans is on Cape Cod, and they're subject to new regulations because of nitrogen loading problems and the many estuaries that are there. It's really not apples and oranges as far as Sterling is concerned. You know, our landlocked town in central Massachusetts. Hingham has conflicting statements, but even they, they're on Boston Harbor. They're right on Boston Harbor. So you wouldn't think, you might think that they might have more stringent regulations for a reason there. And finally, what's the last one? Dover has specialized requirement. It's not an outright requirement to do a deep hole. The evaluator can decide not to do it, depending on the topography, depending what that Form 11 says. So, and then the other day, someone threw up, "Well, Concord doesn't either."
Mr. Menon, your time is up.
Okay. If there's any questions, perhaps, perhaps I can stay here and answer them with other slides.
Yes, if we could have the--
State your name, your name and address, please.
My name is Gary Menon, 8 Birch Drive.
If we could please go to the Board of Health's presentation?
Can I say Cape Cod rescinded their requirements in July of this year, no longer required--
Can, can we please go to the Board of Health's presentation? That can come up after. Thank you. Representative from the Board of Health?
Point of water, Mr. Martin?
I'm sorry?
It took about two minutes to set that up.
I stopped the present, I stopped my timer during the time that they were setting that up. Yep, absolutely. I'm fair.
Well, good evening to you all. Seems there's a lot of interest in this topic. My name is Anne Marie Catalano, 2 Hazelhurst Way. I'm on the Board of Health, and this is our presentation to help clarify why we put this regulation in. I apologize for having my back to you for a lot of this, but that's how the setup makes us do it tonight. All right. So what we have here are the current regulations for the Board of Health. This is right out of our Subsurface Disposal System Regulations. What is under number five there, A, B, and C, are all what were current prior to December. So I'm not going to sit here, stand here, and read them to you. This is the new regulation that we put in at our December meeting. D, the estimated seasonal high groundwater must be determined through a soil evaluation deep observation hole by a DEP-approved soil evaluator and witnessed by a member of the Sterling Board of Health and/or their agent. Results of deep observation holes will be assumed to be representative of the conditions within a circular area having a radius of 40 feet and whose center is at the site of the deep observation hole. If a soil evaluation subsequent to 1995 has not previously been conducted on the site within the area of the soil absorption system, then a current soil evaluation must be performed and witnessed by a health agent or alternative inspector. The estimated seasonal high groundwater through the deep observation hole determined prior to April 1995 are deemed invalid. This is a new regulation. It does not affect anyone who had a septic system put in after April 1995. You are in compliance with the new regulation. It does not affect anyone who bought their home after April 1995. You are in compliance with the new regulation. If you're not in one of the above groups, then this affects you, and we do realize that that does affect many people. Why does doing the soil evaluation, why does this provide better information? Per Mass DEP Guidance for the Inspection of On-Site Sewage Disposal System Groundwater Determination. At the -- this is in the introduction to that section. At the present time, the most reliable method of determining the high groundwater elevation is to excavate a deep test hole and have it evaluated by a certified soil evaluator. There are other acceptable means. I did see at some point on the Sterling community page, someone who was not in favor of this had posted A through N and left off that top section there. So your basic septic design. So the water comes out of your house, it goes into your septic tank. This is your septic tank. It's sized so that the, what goes in stays in for 48 hours. The solids, which we all know what those are, go down to the bottom. The oil and grease goes up to the top. Then, as it refills, the, it's called now effluent, comes out the outlet of the septic box. This goes from the septic, this is solid pipe, non-perforated pipe, into the distribution box. This is the piece of the septic design system that now takes that liquid component and spreads it out over your septic field. So when you are selling your home, you have to have a septic inspection done. That means somebody has to come in, they have to look at your septic tank in the inlet, they have to look at your distribution box, they have to find your field. So there is already equipment on your property to have that done. Now, the importance of the offset from the drain field to the groundwater. So here's this system again. The whole idea is to keep the effluent, which is full of bacteria, viruses, pollutants, out of your groundwater. Your groundwater is also called your drinking water. So your field here, the wastewater treatment happens in the soil, and the idea is you want to keep what goes on on that level out of your groundwater. The bedrock is your impermanent later. That is where no more groundwater will go beyond that. Seasonal high water table. The soil fills up with water, groundwater, that then becomes a saturated zone. Here is your high level. That typically happens December to April in this area. That's when you have your snow and your rains. This year, who knows what's going on with it? But your low level is typically in the summer, so that you can see the difference there. So the idea is you want your septic system to be above this high seasonal line. That is the highest level. You don't want to put, put it down here, and now when the water does rise, you're going to be polluting the groundwater. So initially, we called the required observation pit a deep observation hole because if you look in definitions in the Title V regulations, that is the only definition they give, and they have no depth of a hole. It's just a hole. People can find five feet, 10 feet when you look at an installation of a new system, trying to figure out where to side a system. That is not what we are doing. Conjures those images up of that 10-foot hole which rips your whole front lawn apart. What you need to do is reach the bottom of the leaching field, and this depth varies from each individual system to the next. Where am I on time, please? Where am I on time?
You've got less than three minutes.
Okay. Most homeowners will have a copy of their septic design and as-built systems in the Board of Health office if you don't have one in your own possession. So this is the definition, a deep observation hole, an open pit dug to permit examination of the soils and to obtain data relative to the mean annual high groundwater. The evaluation hole needs to reach the bottom of the leaching field. Soil evaluators in Massachusetts are certified by passing a written exam after completing designated coursework. They have outsourced this to the New England Interstate Water Pollution Control Commission, who administers classes and examinations and maintains a list of current soil evaluators. So what information does soil evaluation give? The soil below the leaching field is a very important part of your septic system. As I said, that is where that bacteria gets neutralized and does not enter your groundwater. It's, soil evaluation can also be a PERC test, but that's not what we have for time of transfer. The soil evaluator, he looks for signs of saturation. They are trained to figure out what, what they're looking for and to tell how high the water has gotten. They use what's called a Muncil cell. It's used by evaluators, artists, and food scientists. They use specific books. Doesn't mean anything to me. I am not trained, I am not certified in that. But they look at the characteristics of the soil, they can tell where the high groundwater is and when it's been there. So this is the kind of things they look at, and it means something to them. Doesn't mean anything to me, and unless you are a certified soil evaluator, I don't expect that to mean anything to you either. The depth varies. We have one plan that came before us for a variance request where this soil evaluation hole was noted. Hole is relatively easy to dig with a bar and shovel, 60 inches. Another property, the hole was 77 inches, the groundwater was 48, but the distribution box outlets, that center part I talked to you about, that was down 39 inches. So you have to dig below that. Another property, they--
We're on time.
Okay.
So the next thing I'd like to do today is open it up for comments and discussion. I just want to make sure that I reiterate that we're going to stay for relevancy on the motion, and we're going to alleviate redundancy. So we start to get redundant, we need to stop doing that, and then we're going to go for votes.
Banner Moderator Jim Getten, 7 Shady Lane. Ladies and gentlemen, among other things, I'm a lawyer retired from trial practice. I read 310 CMR 15.3024 and the guidance put out by Mass DEP on its website. I read 310 CMR 15.3024 and the guidance put out by Mass DEP on its website. Under this 3.3024, reprinted in your program here, the warrant, "A deep observation hole test is not required to determine high groundwater elevation during inspection." In the guidance, Mass DEP says a deep hole test is the last resort to determine high groundwater during a four-system. Under the decades-old doctrine of legal preemption, a statute or regulation promulgated by a higher government authority in conflict with a statute or regulation promulgated by a lower government authority preempts the field. In other words, the Mass Regulation 310 CMR 15.3024 preempts this local regulation slid through last December. In other words, this local regulation under the preemption doctrine is absolutely illegal. So for any of you facing a $40,000, a $50,000 septic redo because of this illegal local regulation, I suggest that you take your $20,000, $30,000, $40,000 and pay it as a legal retainer and sue the Board of Health, because I almost guarantee you're going to win. And in the meantime-- in the meantime, please pass Article 8.
Richard Lane, 45 Tanglewood Road. First thing I'd like to do is dispute the comment that says that this will not affect some homeowners. I will tell you, as most real estate agents will tell you, that if this affects the value of your neighbor's house, it affects the value of your house. It affects the value of your neighborhood. So it does affect us all. And tonight, we've seen and heard many reasons why the Board of Health regulation should be reversed, in my opinion. And I believe these arguments are valid. However, I believe the strongest argument is the simplest argument. We just don't need any more regulation. Massachusetts has some of the strongest environmental laws and regulations in this country. These are enough. Sterling does not need to go beyond the minimum of Title V. The Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection is constantly evaluating our state's environmental regulations. In fact, the most recent changes to Title V were just enacted in July of 2023, just three months ago. These were changed only after exhaustive hearings and scientific evaluations determined that they were required. And the new changes were only required in certain areas of the state where their scientific research showed that they were necessary. These changes did not include any additional requirements for system inspections in our area of the state. And certainly didn't include a regulation that requires a deep observation hole, a shallow observation hole, because there is no such test exists with the DEP, or even any type of redoxymorphic features soil evaluation. If DEP had reason to believe that such a test was necessary to protect our groundwater, then they would have included it in these recent changes. They didn't. Additionally, something that's often overlooked is the law that allows local boards of health to enact more stringent regulations than DEP. This is Chapter 111, Section 31. Does allow for this. However, the law also states, and I quote, "Prior to the adoption of any such regulation or amendment which exceeds the minimum requirements for subsurface disposal of sanitary sewage as provided by the State Environmental Code, a Board of Health shall state at the public hearing the local conditions which exist or reasons for exceeding such minimum requirements. I have never seen or heard the local conditions which exist which would require a deep observation hole or any reason for the Board of Health other than because we can." We are not children. Or we're not line sheep. We are knowledgeable adults. We live in a town that is known for its independent thinkers who can make decisions for ourselves. My decision is to vote in favor of this article. I encourage everyone here to do the same. And if this article passes and the Board of Health does not act upon it, then the next step should be a recall election.
Good evening. Mike Temple, 12 Bean Road. My apologies, sir. Do you have a hand raise? My apologies. My first question is, after this vote, when and if it is a yes, any members of the Board of Health that are here, are they going to rescind this? Because if they already are stating that they will not regardless of the vote here, we need to start on a recall. That's my first comment. The second is typically when a regulation comes in, it's because of existing facts. There are no existing facts that anyone has ever shown that our town wells are polluted or that we have individual wells in older homes that have septic that are causing issues. I could understand this regulation if someone told me I have contamination in my water at my house with my well, and a professional is telling me it's probably from my septic. The person would want to repair their septic. But the idea that we say we have some of the cleanest water around, we have no issues with our water in town, yet somehow we're going above and beyond Title V just mystifies me. This is just another regulation added on that has no need. That's the frustrating part to me is, a patient's sick, you do tests, you do examinations, you move forward. Here, we do not have a sick patient, we do not have any symptoms, we have nothing, but we're all going to pay for additional tests and additional things that will be required if we want to sell our homes.
Board of Health, I think you had a question. If the motion passes, will you be rescinding the revisions to the regulation?
I've got to answer that with some information, yeah. I don't believe we will. It is incorrect to say that Title V doesn't address this situation. It defines failure. 310 CMR 1503, Section A 7, and it states that a cesspool privy or any portion of a soil absorption system that extends below the groundwater elevation constitutes a system that fails to protect the public health and safety of the environment. That's straight out of Title V. So the discussion that the Board of Health went beyond Title V is not correct. And I think we stand by that decision since it is in Title V.
Nate? So I just want to make that clear that when this passes, if this passes, the Board is going to ignore the voices of people.
It will be discussed.
That's a yes.
All right. I would like to--
Anne Marie, excuse me, you had some folks that were behind you.
I'm Gail Hassett, 60 East Park Road. Last Thursday night, I asked them how many Title V's they've done this year. 62 Title V's. They had to dig 19 holes, so that means 19 properties were older than 95, but there were 43 that weren't. Out of the 62 Title V's, 10 failed. Two, that's the information I got from the Board of Health on Thursday night, okay? Two were from the night before 95, and eight were from the past 95, which comes out to. The septic systems after 95 had an 18% fail rate, and the systems before 1995 only had a 10% fail rate. So the fact that they're adding this hole, which nobody else in the state really does, to every citizen in this town is outrageous. It doesn't, the numbers don't support it. And I personally spoke to a number of Board of Health agents because our Board of Health did not do their diligence when they were talking about doing this deep hole. I was the one that told them that the deep hole wasn't the correct terminology because I was educated on what it was. And then they started to discuss changing it. But that shouldn't happen. We should have a Board of Health that actually does due diligence when they're going to add something to a regulation to their townspeople, and they need to consider the townspeople because that's who pays, who they're supposed to be working for. And if this thing isn't helping the town, it's making a few people some money that is not called for to take out of all the townspeople. There is a limited amount of water where they know where the water is. You can pass a regulation like that if you have your, you have topography, how high the septic system is or how low the septic system is in the water level. You might have a, just someone low enough and have a water level, might need something like that. Now, my understanding is they tell us because it was a suit. And it was a suit. They're telling us it was a suit because they had a passed Title V and a failed table Title V. Maybe that's the tiebreaker that you have to do something like this, but the numbers of what's passing to charge all these people that make us pay that much money for something that isn't even needed is just disgusting.
There's a lot of misinformation.
Well, hang on, hang on. Hang on one second. The Board, if they're-- Was it information on the Board of Health numbers?
I tried to correct something as well, and I was shut down too. This is not fair.
Hold on, hold on one second, please. Hold on one second, please. Alan, I'll let you correct the numbers in one moment.
I'm Sarah Sloan, 500 Drive. Mr. Menon, just to clarify, the Cape rescinded their regulations July of this year, like two days after they put it in. There is one town, I want to say it's Hingham, and even Hingham does not have a blanket requirement for the town. They have particularly, particular addresses. There is a list on their website, and I'm sorry if it's not Hingham. They have a list on their town website of the addresses based on their location, the home's location to the water. You were inaccurate about there is no documentation about how deep the hole has to be, I'm sorry, Anne, wherever she is. It clearly says on the Mass website, "The deep hole test, minimum depth of four feet below the bottom elevation of the proposed soil absorption system, but in no case less than 10 feet below existing natural grade." So that's the first thing. If this, there were no studies done, there was no evidence, don't you think people would have bought into this a little better if there were studies saying this is going on, that's going on, this is going on, this is why we need to do this? If the water was the main concern, why is this only being required of certain homes at time of sale? This makes zero sense. Per Massachusetts law, Chapter 30A, I believe it's Section 18, something 18 through 25, you can all look it up. The open meeting law was broken because this was passed during the meeting of December 8th. All this takes is anyone to pick up the phone to the Attorney General's office. The Attorney General will do an investigation. Whatever regulation was passed during that broken open meeting, which was December 8th, they can determine, they can make that regulation null and void like that. They can also make it so the town has to reimburse anyone who had to pay to follow that regulation, including court and lawyer fees. So we don't need to go through this rigmarole and say, oh, you know, please rescind this. A phone call. I have not yet been affected by this, but a phone call. That's all it is, to the AG's office. So Chapter 30A on mass.gov, Sections 18 to 25, look it up. That's all it is. We don't need to play games. You know, I don't, I've not been to these meetings, I've read what was said, I've read what these poor people are going through, I've seen the poor widower down the street from me, her home dug up, and shame, shame, shame. You know who this is affecting? This is affecting the, in a comment on Facebook, "We need to protect the potential home buyers." Shame, shame, shame. How about protecting the people that have lived here for 30 years, 30-plus years, that have paid their taxes, raised their kids, done everything in this town? Well, we're going to protect the prospective home buyers? Uh-uh. Phone call, people. Phone call. Attorney General's office.
Okay, my next comment is, for those that want to speak next, just make sure the comments aren't redundant from what we've heard so far. We've heard a lot of comments that are the same, which is fine if we all have similar viewpoints, but I just want to be sure that we're getting to the end of the comments.
Hi, I'm Michelle Blackmore, 31 Taft Road. I just have a question on the presentation that was made by the Board of Health in regards to who it affects. So it's, I'm a little bit confused because it said that it affects homes that were built before 1995, and it doesn't affect people who have, oh, sorry, it affects those who bought a home after a certain amount? So if I bought my house in 2020, I had a soil evaluation, but it didn't follow what they're proposing. So if this is so important, why doesn't it apply to everyone? I don't get it.
Does the Board of Health like to address that?
So you're saying if you bought your home in 2020, why didn't you have to do that?
Well, why doesn't it have to update now? If I sell my house--
When did you buy your house?
Well, it doesn't matter. I'll make up the time, 2018.
Then you've already had that done as part of that previous sale and transfer.
But not a deep hole? If it affects, if it affects-- if it affects the environment and we're so concerned about it, why doesn't it apply to me or everybody? That's my question. If we're so concerned about the environment, it doesn't affect everyone.
Alan, you can go to the speaker.
Alan Hoffman, 14 Washakeham Ave., Chairman of the Board of Health. I think we ought to let everyone speak out so that we don't keep bouncing back and forth. I'll address things that are factual, but I'd like to hear all of them so that we don't keep bouncing back and forth, with your permission.
Alan, you'll have my permission when I grant you the permission. So can you please answer the question?
Which of the questions?
This question that she was just asking. She was just asking if she purchases a home in 2018 and she, why, and she didn't have a deep hole in her home?
It depends on when her septic system was installed. If it was installed after 1995, she is automatically satisfied the requirement.
But that's not a question.
I'm sorry. We're hearing a lot of comments here that I, you know, what is the question?
So I guess the answer from the Board of Health is that they need more information.
I think we'll, I think--
On the hypothetical.
I'd like to address it after we have all this out so that we don't end up bouncing around. Let everybody get their comments on the floor. That's my request of the chair.
Got it.
Okay. Is it granted or not?
I guess that's the answer from the Board of Health. I guess we'll take the next person.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Paul Salver, 33 Birch Drive. I was fortunate enough to be at the Board of Health meeting on Thursday, and it was pretty educational, but I'd like to relay on a few things-- educational, but I'd like to relay on a few things that came from that meeting stated by either members or advisors to the Board of Health. This was instituted because of, and this is somewhat of a repeat, of a lawsuit that came up because of a test discrepancy. When I had asked, we're one small town in the state. We can't be the only state or the town that's had this issue. And I asked when that came up, this litigation, what will we be doing now to not have to litigate again? What had we done? Did we contacted other towns to see how they had handled this because we can't be the only one? They did nothing. There was no communications. There was no response to that. They'd done nothing. So, this test was instituted without any consultation with any other towns, what they'd done in this situation. It was an easier thing to do to penalize everyone here than to do a little due diligence. Number two is, it was also stated when reading off the requirements or the criteria for this deep hole test, which I guess now is differently named, that test, it was stated in that document by the state that it's open to interpretation. It's not, it's not science. As someone stated earlier, if the lighting changes, if you have two people looking at this test, they can come up with totally different results. So, there's no science. It's, it's black magic. Number three is, if, I'm, I'm sorry, the results may not be black magic, but they can't identify when the table, water table was that high. It could have been when the dinosaurs were here, could have been last week. You can't, you can't quantify or qualify that timeframe. And number three is, we live close to the Wauttusut Reservoir, and my, my assumption is that if we were contributing any kind of dirty water, there's this place east of us, Boston, which would mandate that regulation for this surrounding area, and that has not happened. So, we are special. We're the only town within the area that requires this subjective, expensive, and not useless, but certainly not really beneficial to anyone test.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Jim Gettin, 7 Shady Lane. I'm not, I'm not going to be repetitive. Ladies and gentlemen, the last time Sterling Well Field was contaminated with E. coli bacteria was about, I think, 10 years ago. It's the well field along Route 12 we all passed by. The DPW blamed the E. coli contamination on beavers that swim in the wetlands near the Quag, which is the west, westerly part of West Washakeam Lake, west of the rail bed, the rail trail. So, they blamed it on beavers, not humans. Just thought you'd want to know. Maybe, maybe the Board of Health can take, kind of take a hint that beavers may be a little bit more dangerous to the groundwater than humans.
Okay, I just got a, I just got a, an ask to move the question. Do I have a second on that motion? Okay, we're going to have a vote right now to call the question. The vote is open to call the question. You're voting right now on a motion to call the question. There was a motion on the floor. This is parliamentary procedure to call the question. There was a second. We have to vote on this motion. It's to move the motion forward. We're voting to move the motion forward. This happens at a town meeting all the time.
Are you referring to the warrant article?
Just a motion to move the question forward. We're not voting on the motion. We're just voting to move, to, to vote. We're voting to vote. Okay?
We are moving to, move to vote for Article 8, which is a citizen's petition to rescind the BOH regulations. That's what we're voting on. Yes means we are requesting that the BOH rescind their new...
No, no. Maureen, Maureen, we're actually voting whether, you, you called the question, which means we're voting to vote.
Oh, we're voting to vote.
Yeah. So, we're actually voting to end discussion is what we're voting for. There is a motion on the floor to end discussion.
It came from the Select Board Table.
It came from the Select Board Table to end discussion. I heard the motion on the floor to end discussion. And it was seconded.
It was.
So, we're voting to end discussion. It doesn't have to pass. You guys have the vote. Okay? We're voting to end discussion. The vote is open to end discussion. Yes or no? Vote is closed. Vote passes. We've ended discussion. 134 to 131. It was close. Okay, there's a motion, the motion for Article 8, the vote is open for, to vote on Article 8. Moved at the town vote to urge the Board of Health to rescind. The vote is open to vote on Article 8. Yes is to rescind. Yep. To urge to rescind. Vote is closed. Motion passes, 251 to 33. Okay, last up, we have Article 9. We have our last citizen's petition for a Board of Health audit. We have another presentation on this audit. I have a motion on the floor for the town to appropriate $10,000. There's going to be, I believe there's some wording change on the motion coming, so I'm going to stop to, I'm going to read the motion on the floor first and then let the citizen's petitioners change the motion. Moved at the town appropriate $10,000 from any available reserve funds to authorize an audit of the Sterling, audit of the Sterling Board of Health by Massachusetts Municipal Association Partner to examine the systems, programs, and financial data of the Board of Health in order to provide independent assurance that our company, community's financial interests are paramount and statements are reliable, accurate, and complete. This independent audit shall review the Board of Health's financial records to evaluate operating procedures, verify financial controls, and comment on management practices in a formal, transparent process. The audit shall be comprised of three components, opinion, financial statements, and supplementary information, and a separate management letter. An audit committee should be formed for this specific process. The audit committee shall consist of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Finance Committee, and one at-large member from the group of recently certified petitioners with relevant experience in accounting, finance, or management preferred, chosen by the Board of Selectmen, provided however that this member shall not be associated in any way with the Sterling Board or Committee, nor an employee of the Town of Sterling, or related to any Board or Committee member or employee of the town. The audit committee shall manage the selection process for an independent audit firm by developing criteria, reviewing prospective bids, and making a hiring recommendation. An audit committee can monitor the audit progress, review the auditor's final report and accompanying financial, financial statements, attend the auditor's exit conference, and monitor any recommended corrective action plans. The audit committee can identify areas where expanded scope audits or internal control reviews might be appropriate. The audit committee shall present the findings of the audit firm during a Select Board meeting. Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Discussion or presentation? You have 10 minutes. Yes. Microphone, please.
Richard Lane, 45 Tanglewood Road. Everyone should have a copy of the actual petition that was signed by over 200 members of the, of the town. This motion is very similar, but in different important ways. So, I would make this motion. Moved at the town appropriate a sum of $10,000 from any available reserve funds to authorize an audit of the Sterling Board of Health by Massachusetts Municipal Association Partner to examine the systems, programs, and financial data of the Board of Health in order to provide independent assurance that our community's financial interests are paramount and that this, and that statements are reliable, accurate, and complete. This independent audit shall review the Board of Health's financial records to evaluate operating procedures, verify financial controls, and comment on management practices in a formal, transparent process in comparison to other comparable rural residential towns in central Massachusetts. The audit shall be comprised of three components, an opinion, financial statements and supplementary information, and a separate management letter. An audit committee shall be formed for this specific process. The audit committee shall consist of one member of the Board of Selectmen, one member of the Finance Committee, and one at-large member from the group of recently certified petitioners with relevant expertise or professional experience in accounting, finance, or management preferred, chosen by the Board of Selectmen, provided however that this member shall not be associated in any way with any Sterling Board or Committee, nor any, nor an employee of the Town of Sterling, or related to any Board or Committee member or employee of the town. The audit committee shall manage the selection process for an independent audit firm by developing criteria, reviewing prospective bids, and making a hiring recommendation. An audit committee can monitor the audit process, review the auditor's final report and accompanying financial statements, attend the auditor's exit conference, and monitor any recommended corrective, corrective action plans. The audit committee shall identify areas where expanded scope of audits or internal control reviews may be appropriate. The audit committee shall present the findings of the audit firm during a Select Board meeting. That's my motion.
Do I have a second? I need that amendment.
Richard.
Ms. Moderator, point of order. I believe an article has to state the source of the funds. This is sufficiently vague. I believe you have to actually identify the source of the funds.
John Maluski, 29 Birch Drive. We asked about the source of funds in the past, and because there was a question about availability of funds in different areas, had to be worded in a way that it is until we can identify a possible source. There were, in fact, a couple suggestions of where it might be able to come from, but we don't have a locked-in concrete right now. The Financial Board might be able to answer that question.
Yes.
I'd like to offer an amendment to that article in changing the source of funds to state the general stabilization account. This is George Handy, Chairman of the Finance Committee.
Do we have a, do we have a second on the amendment? So, now we have an amendment to the amendment. Now, are we ready for discussion? So, these are discussions on the amendments.
Oh, discussions on the amendment as opposed to the original one?
Yes.
George Handy, Chairman of the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee has chosen to recommend passage of Article 9. And just so you know...
Yep. Can you repeat what you said?
George, I couldn't hear you.
George, repeat, please.
George Handy, Chairman of the Finance Committee. Can you hear me now? The Finance Committee has chosen to recommend passage of Article 9. However, I believe we're just talking about the Second Amendment right now, which is to utilize the stabilization fund, so I might have been premature.
I think, I think we've got an amendment to an amendment right now on the floor. So, we've got a lot of amendments going on here. So, but we have not yet had our presentation on the, on the whole of the emotion yet. So, let's vote on the, let's vote on amending the motion to, to include the stabilization, general stabilization fund first.
Can I ask a question about that? About that amendment to the amendment? Linda Woodland, 4 Dever Lane. How much is in the general stabilization fund, including what was voted out to be taken out of it tonight? And that's the total.
Can the Finance Committee address that? Finance Committee?
$1,164,000.
$1,640,000.
It's $1,164,337. 164337.
Oh, that's in the stabilization?
So, we're moving, we're, oh, sorry.
Blaine Burchad, Raleigh Hill Road. What happens when the audit costs more than $10,000? How do you handle that? Can anybody answer that?
I would suggest you...
Fred Aponte, Town Accountant. I've reached out to our auditors. It's going to be $300 an hour at their cost. I mean, you may find somebody cheaper. What would we do with that? Obviously, we'd have to come back to town meeting. We certainly can't pay them if we don't have the money. So, if it's over $10,000, we have another, have to have another meeting.
Just a thought, the audit we run on the whole town yearly runs 21,000. I wouldn't think the Board of Health is going to run over 10.
Yes.
This is to the Finance Committee as well. Steve Domeno, 9 North Row Road. If the Finance Committee does an audit every year, which I would expect you do as well as the Select Board, why do we need another $10,000 to audit the Board of Health? as the Select Board, why do we need another $10,000 to audit the Board of Health?
As Chairman of the Finance Committee, I'd like to respond to that. Our job is not to audit every department in the town. We hire a town auditor to audit the financial aspects of the town. We do not have, as a rule, an auditor to audit the managerial and operational aspects of a department. So if you read this article, that is part and parcel of the audit. It is, however, the responsibility of the Finance Committee vis-à-vis the rules of the Finance Committee to, and I will quote you, "The Finance Committee shall have the authority at any time to investigate the books, accounts, and management of any department of the town and to employ such expert and other assistants as it may deem advisable for that purpose. And the books and accounts of all departments and offices of the town shall be open to the inspection of the committee and any person employed by it for that purpose." Hence the reason we're supporting this article.
Follow-up question, please. Ms. Moderator, follow-up question.
You'd have to go to the mic.
Okay, that sounds very reasonable. I'm glad that the Finance Committee has the responsibility of conducting audits. I turn to the Select Board. Do you have the responsibility to investigate managerial activities and other procedures of other boards, including the Board of Health? And if so, is that being conducted by the Select?
As you know, the Board of Health is an elected board. We have really no purview over the board, or any other board for that matter, DPW, Board of Health. The only ones we can watch out for are ourselves. Speaking of the audit, or to the audit, I understand where you're coming from. My question would be, we're asking for this, but a lot of this information can be gotten through a public records request as opposed to spending the $10,000 on an outside venue. And as George has said, we do have our audit company that oversees all of our practices, which would include the Board of Health.
Do we have one more comment on the amendment?
Richard Lane, 45 Tanglewood Road. I just want to point out that this is not just a financial audit. This is an audit of management practices, and it's an audit of our town's management practices in comparison to other towns that do the same thing. Are we doing it right, or are we not? And yes, a lot of it can be found out through public records requests. But I like to have an audit company do it because they're the professionals there. I know people that do it. I have family that does municipal audits down in New Jersey. This is the way to do it, and this is the way the Department of Revenue on their website recommends that it be done. Matter of fact, a lot of this article was cut and pasted from the Department of Revenue's website. So this isn't something that somebody just made up. It's something that is recommended by the State Department of Revenue.
Can we go back to the actual amendment, amending where the funds are going to come from? So we're amending the article to... We're talking only about the amendment of where the funds are coming from. Are your comments about where the funds are coming from?
No.
All right. So can we vote on amending the motion first? Can we go back to that? Okay. Great. So we're voting to amend the motion, and we're amending it to appropriate the $10,000 from the general stabilization fund. So that's where we are right now. We're amending that. So we're amending the amendment. So we're back to that. So we're amending the amendment. Okay? All right. So if we're all... So if you vote yes, you're voting that we're okay with taking the funds from the general stabilization fund. If you're voting no, you're voting that you're not okay with that. Okay? Okay, the vote is closed. Okay, that vote passes to 37 and 32. Now, before we move on, we need to now vote to accept the primary amendment, which was from the original warrant to the piece of paper that we all received. Okay? There were some wording differences there. Slight word difference. So it's the primary amendment as amended that we just voted to accept from the general stabilization fund. Does everybody understand that? So we can talk on the original amendment? So he's saying... Go ahead, Gary.
Gary Menon, 83 Drive. Rich Lane's comment notwithstanding, I do support that. However, the article that's printed in the warrant, as originally printed here, is not the article that we had signed by 214 people. So why is this even a discussion, really? Why isn't that insert what we should be talking to and not what's in this... Or why do we have to vote on it? It should already be there. That's my question. I think it would be tacitly illegal for this warrant to be issued in the form it was.
Because the warrant was printed, so we have to... So the warrant was printed.
Okay. It seems that you rewrote it, and you should just say...
Well, I didn't rewrite anything, so I'm just trying to make sure that we have the right order voted on.
You understand what I'm saying?
I getcha. So let's... Can we move forward? All right. Got it. We're all... We're picking up what you're putting down, so let's just move forward. So can we vote to accept the piece of paper as amended with the $10,000 from the general stabilization fund? Okay? That's where we're voting to accept. Y'all got me? All right. Make sure you're all voting. I know it's getting hot in here. All right, vote's closed. All right, we accepted it, it passed. Okay, now... Drum roll, please. Let's discuss. 205 to 21, sorry. Don't shoot the messenger. All right. Now let's discuss our amended amendment.
John Maluski, 29 Birch Drive. Okay, this is part of the presentation that we brought up. Want to get me... I've participated in audits of a military nature where I'm not concerned with financial as much as I am systems management and safety of life. So when I spoke with the town administrator, he told me that he had conducted a financial audit of whatever departments he's responsible for. So that part's taken care of. What about the rest of it? Paragraph 2 says, "An audit is an examination of systems, programs, and financial data." They changed the page on me. "Financial data intended to provide independent assurance that community's financial statements are reliable, accurate, and complete." If we go from there, it says, "We have to have a comparison with somebody else to find out how we stand. What is complete? What is reliable? What is accurate?" Gary, you want to take this? He's far more familiar with what some verbiage is and the information. He provided some of this information for us. This is Gary Menon.
Gary Menon, Birch Drive. Okay, just looking at some of the data for the Board of Health. In 2022, there were a total of 603 inspections that were the responsibility of the Board of Health. The total number of hours, if you look at, on the average, 50 weeks a year, 40 hours a week, that's 2,000 hours for the agent. Assistant agent, I estimate 320 hours. So we have 2,320 hours to do 603 inspections. If you took an hour for each inspection, which is not likely, I've been on many of them, it'd take a few minutes at most, at least the ones I've attended. We don't take responsibility for any septic design. We go inspect the septic system. Septic system's laid out. We don't re-measure anything. So the inspections don't take anywhere near an hour. So we're talking about 603 inspections. Shouldn't take any more than 603 hours. Where's all the other hours going from? Next slide, please. It's not, again, it's not just about financial management. It's about how this board is managing their business. We've had two open meeting law complays within the last couple of years, and it involves this misinformation that has been circulating, and the other one involved communication policies. These were deliberations which were handled outside of an open meeting, and they were concurred that they infected, make these violations. Next slide, please. Now, this is a typical timesheet, and a timesheet requires that the supervisor and the employee sign off on their hours. And none of these timesheets are being signed off either by the supervisor or the employee. Next slide. This is indeed required by the Human Resources Employee Handbook. It's in Sterling, Massachusetts. We looked at other towns, and many other towns treat the Board of Health duties as a part-time effort. Looking at the Neshoba District, they have 16 towns which they cover, and they cover with five agents. That's approximately 3.33 towns per agent. We have an agent and a half covering one town. Other towns, again, look at it as kind of like a plumbing inspector. He works another job, but he takes a few hours off to do a plumbing inspection. We should look at that sort of thing. Next thing I'd like to go to... Go ahead. And basically, that's it. Okay?
All right, I'm going to allow the Board of Health to respond. If there's any comments from the Board of Health?
Alan Hoppen, Board of Health. I think this is a subtle attack on our agent. Our agent, in terms of the agent's hours, the agent, and I've brought this up with him endlessly, I brought it up with him again in the past week regarding Columbus Day, he works seven days a week on foot at town. Certainly during COVID, he worked 70 hours a week during town, as did our administrator in the office, who was only at that time budgeted 20 hours per week. She just decided not to go home during the week and work regular hours. So in emergencies, certainly, there can be no argument about that. You know, the agent does an excellent job. As far as signing off on his salary, Board of Health members signs off on the budget sheets. And so I recognize that the agent probably should work the qualified number of hours. He turns back endless days of vacation that he's entitled to. He can only accumulate so much under the town bylaws. I don't know offhand what that is. But each year, he turns... He can't accumulate more, so he just turns it back. So I mean, he's very dedicated to his job. Thank you. Oh, yeah. Let me... The hours are far beyond just title lock. I mean, restaurants, and multiple inspections for a given septic system, investigating all sorts of complaints. It's just sort of... It doesn't make sense to compare his work to somebody who has a regional inspector who really does mostly septic systems.
Great.
Gail Hassett, 16 East Park Road. I actually went to work for a Board of Health in the middle of the pandemic in Milbury, and they had a health inspector that was shared by Milbury, Grafton, Sutton, Shrewsbury, and West Boylston. One. And I don't know what else she did, but... So I think having one and a half is, wow. I was so shocked that we had that, knowing the size of our town and what we do, because they have so many more restaurants and everything that we do. They're twice the size at least, and then some. So I just want to let you know, perspective too. You don't know until you see these things. Thank you.
Madam Moderator, Jim Gettens, 7 Jady Lane. Mr. Hoppen referred to subtlety. I'll be really subtle about this. The agent runs Favreau Septic and Destruction.
We can't disparage another person.
I'm not disparaging.
Yeah, but we...
He's got a website, Madam Moderator.
I understand.
About his business. Now, let me tell you about a public records request.
I'm asking us, please, not to do that.
Let me tell you about a public records request I did for his timesheets about a year and a half ago, okay? He claims big time overtime.
I'm asking...
On all of his timesheets.
Sir?
While he has his listed business.
Sir, I'm just asking us not to go there, please.
Not to go there? Not to go there where there's a conflict of interest?
Are you raising your voice at me? Because I think that's disrespectful.
I'm disrespectful.
To me, right now, I think you're being disrespectful to me.
Okay. So let me... I'll be very subtle. There's a subtle... There's a conflict of interest, and he's claiming big overtime on his timesheets.
I think we need to shut this down, please.
Good evening. John Kilcoyne, 90 Beeman Road. I think everybody can hear me. Not to agree or disagree with some of the comments, but having been in the public accounting field for about 35 years, this is... I'd like to know about three things. Number one, we have Tony Rosellian Associates as our CPA firm for many years. They're highly respected. They do the audit of our town. They look at all the departments, all the boards. They look on a sampling basis. They don't look at every transaction. We pay $100,000. So I know over the years, they've looked at transactions from the Board of Health in this matter. First question, has Mr. Roselli and/or any of the managing partner on this job been contacted? I think I heard Fred say yes. Was this brought to his or her attention, and what were their comments? Number two, because I think there's a duplication. They do the financial audit, they do some operational testing, but they do a financial audit, and they do it very well. Where did the $10,000 come from? Are we just pulling a number out of a hat? I mean, you're asking for... The audit should be comprised of three components: an opinion, financial statements, and supplementary information, including a separate management letter. We get all that every year. I don't think we've gotten the management letter for this past fiscal year, ending June 30th, but we should be getting it very shortly. And in all the years I've been on the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, I've never seen any specific charges or violations made about Board of Health or any other board. I mean, it's submissions, suggestions for doing things a lot better, but nothing that would amount to going... would amount to going to the Attorney General. Number three, we're not being very specific on a lot of this stuff. Yeah, the hours, you can talk, that's internal. That's an internal issue that should be dealt with by the parties here in this room tonight. And it's called, either basically the board takes action about it, or we take action in an election. That's what that's all about. You can ask Roselli and these people, hey, I want you to do an operation, a lot, and look at every single transaction that the Board of Health or some of the board had. And they're not going to, they're not going to come in and say, it's only $10,000. So you have to be a little more specific than recent regulatory and fiscal actions, deliberation methods, or the efficiency and focus of the board. I would just suggest that that's all an internal, all internal issues that we should be able to take care of, and maybe not jump at paying $10,000. It's going to be more than $10,000, and let's just really specify what the actions are we want to solve this CPA front. So that's all, I would say, just hold off on that. Thank you.
Richard Lane, 45 Tanglewood Road. I have to disagree with several people that came up here. I don't believe that this is about the health agent. Because I think it is about the board. Because the board manages the health agent, the board is responsible. And, and to John's point, we look at the finances. One of the most important things for this audit committee to do, and this audit committee actually has wide leeway, it's designed into the, the article itself, as recommended by the Department of Revenue, that they can look at what they think they need to look at managerial. Compare us to other towns. Compare us, how we do our, how it's done, and, and if it's done fiscally responsibly. Okay? If we look only internally, we will never see that stuff. That's the whole idea of looking externally. You know? I mean, I've worked over 26 years as a state employee and as a public employee. Believe me, I know how it feels to be questioned. I've been questioned, scrutinized, criticized, people second guess my actions all the time. It happened to me throughout my career, whether it was in court, when I was being audited for intent, for legality, for thoroughness, for, did I show the elements of the crime? Did I follow department rules, regulations, procedures? Was I reasonable, transparent? Did I provide all the evidence? All these things were asked. And although the scrutiny is difficult, it's also necessary. I didn't get to say to a jury or a judge that they should believe me simply because I wore a badge. I didn't get to dictate to my subordinates how or why they should do something simply because I outranked them, and I said, I said so. Okay? Scrutiny is good. This can't hurt the town. It's $10,000. If, if we, if the committee, whoever that committee is, if we vote for it, decides they need more, they're going to have to come back to this body. That's all. But they also have the leeway within the warrant article to narrow it down if it's more expensive than $10,000, and they think they can get the result that they need with the $10,000. Nobody should be afraid of scrutiny. In this article, request an independent audit. An independent audit is unbiased. Okay? We may find out that our Board of Health is outstanding in everything that it does. But I'd like to find out for sure, so I'm voting in favor of this article, and I encourage everyone to do so.
Do we have any more questions or comments? All right, let's vote. All right, the vote on the amendment, amended motion, sorry, not amendment, amended motion. Amended article. The motion's on the floor, it's been seconded. We are now ready to go. The vote is open. Requires two-thirds. Vote is closed. Passes 217 to 52. Okay. I need a motion to dissolve our meeting. I need a second. All in favor? Okay, thank you, have a good night.